Good morning. The June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee was completed for it is nine thirty AM. Chairman of the committee will be called.
I don't have the justice.
Councilmember Herbert. Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Mosketa.
Present.
Five present.
If agenda we were hearing a discussion in the office of the community on their COVID after action report, we'll be hearing a hard comment on their race and political issues before. Central staff will do that to first order, police department, finance and response time report. And finally, we'll have a second discussion of legislation to establish a process for investigating complaints.
Naming the chief of police. We'll now approve our agenda for our committee meeting. If there is no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Seeing and hearing, no objection. Today's agenda is adopted. At this time, we will be transitioning into public comment. I'll moderate the public comment period in the following manner. Uh, let's see, we have a about three people signed up for public comment today. So folks will be given two minutes to speak. I will alternate between virtual and in-person public commenters. And I'll call on each speaker by name and in order in which they registered on the council's website and on the sign-in for form. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to do so, you can still sign up before the end of the public comment session. Once I call a speaker's name, you'll hear a prompt. And this is, of course, for the remote public commenters. If um, when you hear that prompt, you'll need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Please begin speaking by stating your name and the item which you are addressing. Speakers will hear a chime when the ten seconds are left of the allotted time. And once speakers hear the chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up public comments. If you do not end your public comment at the end of the allotted time period provided, the speaker's mic will be muted after ten seconds to allow us to hear from the next speaker. And um, once you've completed your public comment, for uh, those of you commenting virtually, please disconnect from the line. And if you plan to continue following the meeting, you can do so via the Seattle Channel or the listening options listed on the agenda. Again, there are three people signed up for public comment at this time. And I will first call on Howard Gale. Howard.
Good morning. Howard Gale with Seattlestop.org commenting on our failed police accountability system. During the nine years prior to the first meeting of the Community Police Commission in two thousand thirteen, the SPD had killed six people experiencing a behavioral health crisis who were not wielding a firearm. During the nine years after that, that is, the last nine years, that number is now twelve. Twelve. One of those was Charlena Lyles, the pregnant mother of four, murdered weeks after Seattle Police Accountability Legislation was passed. Five years ago this Saturday, per murder, like the eleven others under similar circumstances over the last nine years, was deemed by this accountability system to be quote lawful and proper unquote. Chair Herbert, five years ago, after Charlena was killed, you said, quote, "We are already shamed. What I am pledging to you is to work on finding a new way of doing things so that we actually get different results. I will use the power that I have on the city council to change what is happening in our city today," unquote. Yet, our city went on to kill Albert Fredericks Jr., Danny Rodriguez, Ryan Smith, Terry Caver, Derek Hayden, and the person still unnamed on Beacon Hill in January. All quote lawful and proper unquote. Yes, Chair Harold Herbert, the results have been different these last five years. They have been worse. If you want to pay justice to the memory of Charlena Lyles on the fifth anniversary of her murder by the SPD, then embrace the future of police accountability that dozens of other US cities have post George Floyd by creating direct community control of investigations, discipline, and policy. Look forward to a future of justice and not backwards to a mythical past. And for God's sakes, do not congratulate yourselves today for living in the past when you vote for another police union contract that allows police to investigate police. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman. Alex?
Dear child, my beauty Nazi, damn Nazi fascist mind by either inside. My name is Albert Pippa, and I would talk about the gentleman for what? Call it after. I think it's called it after, right? Don't understand my interest of it after. Do you don't understand what is called it after? You know what it means? You don't show people in faces. You have a mask situation, what is we have right now, absolutely doing? If I don't understand what this is mean after. So I I explain you something what is I understand because my very right now, like five year old boy, you know, from five year grade. For example, you must obey every day. Finish masturbation, you can go and drink coffee. So when you go and drink coffee, this is new after masturbation. Sorry for my small brain in this thing. What does it mean what happens? But I don't see here. You sit at home for hundred forty thousand dollars with four assistants. Every consult costs us one million dollars per year part-time job. You never want stop at this. I understand because you're very smart. Maybe you're too smart, so you try now you look like a mentally sick, like a psychopath. You know what I mean? Because for my understanding, for one million dollars, one million dollars per year, people money, you're supposed to be here without mask, you show us faces. I am here, I'm Alex Zimmerman, I had three thousand dime. Why you don't show me now? You see, I'm shaking right now because I all sick man and you make me sick for the last twenty year every day. The child, my masturbator. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Susan Wright. Susan is showing as not present. Um, we'll just pause for a second to see if that changes. Thank you. Still not seeing Susan Wright as not present, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Ms. Marguerite Richard.
Good morning. Um, I would like to say that um, in um, memory of my cousin, um, Angelo Duggan, that served the fire department for many, many years. Um, uh, yeah, he passed on. But you know what? I'm still here, Angelo, and I'm still fighting these devils, the same ones you probably had to fight to get on board with the fire department. But nonetheless, I have to make it plain, like Malcolm X said, because y'all getting ready to uh, juke dance and whatever for Juneteenth. But I'm not celebrating. All this stuff is a lie. If I have to be coming up in here and people committing fraudulent acts, okay? And then when we don't, you know how they used to do in slavery? If you didn't do what the master said do, you gotta whip it. And now it's uh, security up in here, you know, looking like who'd have thought it? Okay, because over there in Bellevue, they don't play that mess. You get up here at the podium, you say what you have to say, and you leave. Or you can even stay if you like, but there ain't no circus like over here. Okay, so now it's reparations time. Ain't no dancing without the check, okay? It's time to make the payment. And don't tell me other folk are not engaging in it because Boston has now come on board. They ain't gonna win. The Warriors gonna knock them down. But let me tell you something, you not gonna knock me down up in here. I'm born, I was born and raised in Seattle, unless you was wondering where I came from, huh? And I don't play when it comes to stuff like that. I done had too many people that I know friends that done died from racism and discrimination in this town. Hmm? And I'm saying right now for all the George Floyd's family, all the motherf- folk that they talking about the police and whatnot, yeah, get the check in hand, okay? Because we ain't going through it no more. Okay, this year, you end it. And you figure how to get the settlement going into each and every indigenous black home.
Our next speaker is um, we'll go back to Susan Wright to see if Susan is with us. She is still showing as not present. And that is not changing, so we will, with that, close public comment and move to the items on our agenda. Thank you so much. Will the clerk please read in agenda item number one?
Committee agenda item number one, COVID after action report for briefing and discussion.
Thank you, Alex. Like to first welcome Director Curry. Appreciate her taking the time today to present the Office of Emergency Management After Action Report. I would like to note that COVID and its various strains are still very active, and this report should not be misconstrued as a declaration of the end of the pandemic. The Office of Emergency Management is reporting on lessons learned from how the city managed the pandemic. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Curry. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning. Thank you so much, Chairperson Herbert and committee members. It's great to be with you this morning. Um, is it all right if I share my screen? Does that work for the presentation?
Please, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, so you'd think we'd have this down by now, right? So I'm very excited to share this report with you today. Hopefully, I can get it in presentation mode. Are you seeing it in presentation mode now? Okay, looks like we're, okay, cool. All right, great. Thank you again. Um, I think it's also really important to note what Chairperson Herbert said, and that is, we are still in COVID. Um, so this is really about the first year and a half, if you will, of the response for the city. Um, and we are still responding. This is, was the most intense period. I also wanted to point out that we did hire a contractor as a facilitator to be the um, uh, to be the entity that was a neutral party to um, gather all the information from everyone that was involved in the process. So the after-action process that we went through to gather information, both written by surveys and in person, was very lengthy. Um, so just to remind you here, an after-action process is done as a matter of course after any big incident or exercise. And it's a way for us to look at, what did we do well? How did things go? Um, are there improvement areas that are needed? Are there recommendations for next time? It's also super important to note that it's not uh, something that's graded, and it's also not a gotcha process. It really does help us continue to improve what we're doing and do the best that we can for um, the community and and everyone that works for the city. So we, it's also important to note that we are ahead of our our jurisdiction partners, that most people in the region have just started their after-action process, and ours has already been finished. So uh, whoops. The overview of the entire process was that coordination for the response began in January of two thousand twenty. We didn't actually send everyone home until a little bit later, but we started coordinating with partners and listening to the CDC and public health in January. We then had surveys um, bi-weekly with responders during the event. So all through spring and summer of two thousand twenty, we were checking in with folks all the time. Um, part of the funding for what we needed to do from COVID came from something called the Emergency Management Performance Grant, or EMPG, which is a grant that we use quite often in emergency management. Uh, BERC is the company that helped us facilitate the after-action review process, and they worked for us from September two thousand twenty all the way until December of twenty-one. Um, the first assessment um, that we did of a formal assessment was in November of two thousand twenty. Also, the final report, while it was in December, it was not officially approved by all of the committees that needed to look at it within the city until March of two thousand twenty-two. Um, and that final committee was the Emergency Executive Board, which consists of operational department heads, department directors here in the city, so that happened in March. I also wanted to point out the unique nature of COVID. Um, we had never responded to anything like this before, um, and that was true across the nation. Um, and even those of us that had pandemic response plans know it had planned for an event that this, that was this long. Um, so it really was unique in so many ways and really put a lot of stress on the city, um, our ability to provide services, um, and to do everything that we could possibly think of or imagine um, for the community and also in response to what they were telling us were things that were most needed. Public health was the lead agency. Um, this was also unique. We never had a public health emergency of this magnitude where public health was the entity that was really in charge, if you will, or was guiding everything else we do was was um, from the public health guidance. That had never happened before either. It also involved all levels of government and impacted everything that we do in our personal and public lives and our work lives. School was impacted, just everything you could possibly imagine. EOC operations moved to virtual, which we also had never done in um, as completely as we did this time. There are some definite challenges with that, as you might imagine. Uh, the global scale also meant that resources for personal protective equipment, which is PPE, um, vaccines and cleaning supplies, all of that was exhausted fairly quickly, and we were all across the nation and really across the world, competing for the same kinds of supplies. Also, the duration of this event compacted all of those factors and made it incredibly challenging. So the major findings from this report, and this is in the summary report that I had sent to you, um, it is also um, it can be um, viewed publicly now. So if you can't see all the details on this chart, it is in the after-action report itself. So we really had a strong commitment in collab, in collaboration with the mayor's office to um, commit to science-based approach, um, and really looking to public health to give us guidance on how we best help people, help people based on the science. I think it's also important to note that um, in at times of calm, or when you're not in a public health emergency, the things that public health does, they have a lot of time to research and look at how a disease outbreak or of other public health issue is changing. So the fact that they had to make decisions in a very short period of time not only caused confusion, but I think also caused some people to not trust what they were hearing because the public really wanted to have answers in a hurry, and that's not the usual uh, course of events in a, in a public health setting. I think that's important to remember. Um, we also were forced as a city to make an unprecedented number of policy decisions, mostly around um, uh, personnel issues, how people were gonna work, how we were gonna do remote work, how we were still gonna provide services. Um, policy decisions, as you know, are also not usually done in in a really rapid um, manner or in quick succession, and this event really um, uh, required that we do that. So that was an added stress. Citywide logistics was also, we do that in disasters, but not for this duration, so that was also really challenging. We did a good job of focusing on equity in our community services, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, and shifting to remote operations. Um, there were challenges with internal coordination and making sure that staff all felt like, city staff felt like they were included in what we were doing for the public. So the purpose and the structure of the report, and there's a lot of data here, so I'm going to talk about the report and then explain to you how I've organized this presentation, understanding that um, that there is um, a finite period of time this morning, but I've organized the report so that whatever we don't go through, um, you should be able to follow it and have a um, look at on your own. And I'm also happy to come back or answer questions um, either um, on the telephone or email or in person again, if if that's something that you desire. So the structure of the report was to look at, what are the strengths? What are the lessons learned? How could we, and then how could we improve? We looked at three overarching core criteria for the whole, the whole report. So what was the effectiveness of city response? Um, and then we looked at deep dives into, it says seven functional areas, but we actually ended up doing eight. Um, efficiency, we started with seven and then we added one at the, at the end. Um, so my apologies for that. Efficiency, did we make effective use of our resources, our staff time, the partner time, so with neighboring jurisdictions or community partners? Um, and then the report will highlight what those efficiency recommendations are for um, any kind of, uh, any kind of response we do moving forward. And then also looking at everything with an equity lens, was response equitable for staff, residents, and any other um, interested party? Analysis then considered how those limited resources were targeted to those with the greatest need first. So the eight sections that I'm gonna talk with you about are those deep dive functional areas. So these were the eight areas that we looked at, and as now, as I go through the presentation, I'm going to first talk about um, the success for that particular deep dive area and then the recommendations for moving forward. The recommendations then are what will be included in the improvement plan that will then have um, lead and supporting departments to work on those um, improvements related to what the, the um, uh, recommendations are. So you'll see here on this slide, the number one means that this is the first functional deep dive that we did. Um, and then subsequent um, presentation slides are numbered, um, just so you can follow the successes and recommendations of each of those numbered deep dives. So policy setting and operational coordination success, the mayor's office served as the policy setting body. As I mentioned, we followed the science. We were very tied to our city, county, and state partners on messaging and action. So we had a very well-coordinated regional response, and we were all doing the same kinds of things. Um, we rapidly created new policies with strong focus on equity and social justice. The cabinet met via conference call daily at the beginning of the response, and then we moved to a little bit less frequently as we moved on, but we started with daily calls. Then the mayor's office actively reached out to all levels of government, including the federal government, um, and the um, CDC and federal departments and agencies at the federal level, which was super important for what are we gonna do moving, moving forward and making sure we all are on the same page. So for this deep dive, some of the recommendations are this, increasing the accessibility of um, emergency planning documents. Um, and why that matters is that um, we've spent a lot of time on those documents um, and laying out what the procedures are for how we coordinate, talk with each other, and work together. Um, so making those more accessible and including training and exercising of those so that it's second nature for people to use that structure is really important. Training and exercising on those is part of that socialization. Um, then also some plans for rapid decision-making in um, emergency management. We use something called the Incident Command System, which has um, very defined standard roles and responsibilities that everyone's familiar with. That's a good planning tool, um, and we can use those roles and responsibilities and that structure for really managing any large incident. Um, so it's incumbent upon us as a city to use that um, structure for any type of emergency. Also, making sure that the EOC reps, the Emergency Operations Center reps, um, not only understand the process but have the authority to commit resources on behalf of their department. Some of the other recommendations for policy setting and operational coordination were um, that we had a number of challenges with virtual coordination. Um, so reviewing and revising those protocols for how we do that, we've learned a huge amount about what we can and can't do remotely. Um, I know that you've been involved in that as well. Um, strengthening our, our um, project management practice and using additional tools for that. Um, and then also um, whatever external partnerships we have, um, making sure that those roles are are clear about what the expectations are for what we want them to do and how we expect them to engage with us. The second deep dive was continuity of operations.
Director Curry?
How we continue, yeah.
Do you mind if we just take a quick pause for each section? Just to just take a quick scan to see if anybody has questions about a section before moving on?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, I was trying to go quickly.
Any questions on section one? All right, thank you.
On policy setting and, no, we're good? Okay.
We're good. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. So continuity of operations are uh, how we continue to provide services to the public, um, regardless of what has impacted the city. Um, fortunately, prior to COVID, we had looked at department um, coops. Um, but again, we hadn't really looked at a long pandemic response. So um, we, we did have some places where we needed to um, change things and pivot a little bit off of um, what we had laid out already so we could continue to provide service to the public. Um, the Information Technology Department did a really excellent job of giving people laptops and figuring out how to support us doing work remotely. That was very new. Um, we did develop new programs and policies to support employees, everything from, you know, could, what could they take home equipment, how they were gonna um, connect with their supervisors, all of those things were new. Um, SDHR also developed tools to optimize um, staffing. So the recommendations for continuity of operations were um, better involve department directors in those continuity plans. We found that not all of them were as familiar with the department coops as they um, could have been to make that a smoother transition to um, activating those plans. Also, uh, a regular review and discussion of our citywide continuity of government or COG, um, by leadership, so cabinet, and also involving all of you so that we're, everyone's clear on, on how that will work. And then also codifying some pandemic-driven changes to those department coops and, and also making sure they align with what we're doing in our emergency management planning. Some recommendations in the COOP, uh, continuity of operations space are to continue to expand the use of technology, realizing that there are um, uh, challenges that will, will always occur and understanding what we can do remotely and what needs to be done in person. Um, using technology and providing in-person services for residents. Um, there were a lot of services for residents that came back fairly quickly because of the challenges that not everyone is, is able um, to use technology for what they need. Um, continuing to have some grace for people's flexible schedules and doing that work-life balance, um, and improving employee communications and what the strategies are so that staff is hearing um, across the board, across the city, what um, those involved in response are doing, um, and making sure that everyone hears at the same time and understands what's happening. Uh, some people did not feel like that was necessarily happening. Okay, so before I move to logistics and supply chain, any questions here on COOP?
Thank you. I do have one question. Um, you mentioned the um, one of the recommendations coming out is more trainings on the coops. Um, just wondering, will um, that training curriculum also, moving forward, include um, drills or exercises on the continuity of operation plans? And um, who, who, who would participate in those?
Okay, so yeah, great question. Thank you for that. Um, yeah, it's all. Yeah, it's always a good idea to pair exercising that with the training. So the training is really the, you know, making sure the department is familiar with everyone in a department is familiar with their COO plan, who are the, what are those essential services? And then absolutely doing exercises, not only individually, so departments doing those, but then also as part of what we do with the emergency executive board, so the department directors, we would do that with those meetings as well. Because it's important to make sure that the individual department coops are aligned with what we would do in in a citywide response like this, so that you flesh out any of those areas where there might be things that are overlapping or in conflict with each other. So absolutely. Great question. Thank you.
Seeing any others? Move on to section three, please.
Okay, so logistics and supply chain management. Some of the successes that we had were FAS implemented policy and protocols for ordering and distributing of supplies. I can't stress enough what a big undertaking this was. They did a really amazing job. Also FAS OEM and other departments set up the mass testing and vaccination sites. Some of that was in conjunction with FIRE. It really was a just an incredible effort. And as you know, we had Lumen Field and some other mass vaccination sites. We also used other partners such as Swedish and the University of Washington. It really was a kind of all community effort. We also engaged community partners to help people go through vaccination and testing. So there were actually instances of people who had an individual person that guided them through all of it. From how do you, how do you make an appointment? Making sure they had transportation and then walking them through that appointment when they got there was really, really an amazing amazing processes that that made this all work for the community. Also, there's a new logistics management mechanism and additional new warehouse space that we can use for for all kinds of disasters. So also, just as a reminder, logistics and supply chain includes all of those things that are needed for the city to request, order, purchase, track, store or distribute critical supplies. So some of the recommendations are there was not a regional process for working with the county and the state for logistics, so we are working on that. Retaining some of these centralized purchasing and warehousing functions for other supplies and to get ready for the next emergency. Also, the need to preserve budget to maintain supply of equipment and materials, which you know is always a challenge. How do we keep some funds in abeyance for what might happen? Knowing that we might in fact need that budget for other for other things. Some other recommendations were improving coordination between purchasing and the finance functions. CBO now has access to Web EOC, which is the emergency logistics mechanism that we use to share information with our state and county counterparts. So if we are sharing supplies or we need their help with supplies that we don't have. So now CBO is has that access as well. HSD also is learning the requesting process for resources right this week. The Cascadia tabletop exercises are are happening this week, a very scaled down Cascadia this year. But we are doing some training and some resource request practice, so that's happening as we speak. Updating our training to make sure everyone is really clear on how the logistics work. And then also expanding department use of that logistics system for other disasters. Okay, so before I move to public information, are there other questions here for logistics and supply chain management?
Not seeing any from my colleagues. I do have one related to the fact that you reported out that one of the challenges was that the departments don't have funding to do emergency response and that you relied on departmental reserves. Is there a recommendation that we should consider moving forward on that particular finding?
Yes, I know there's a there's a citywide fund for emergencies. And I know that we spent a good deal of that during COVID. I don't have specific numbers for you, but I can definitely get that. We spent, I think, more of that reserve for COVID in the last two years than we ever have as a city. And I can definitely get numbers for you on what we spent, what's left and and if there's a recommendation on that. Yeah, happy to do that. Hey, any any other questions or comments?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so area four is public information. Not sure how the four got on that side of the phrase. But for public information, so this is not only giving information out to the public, but also looking at what's happening in the public, how are they responding to what we're doing, what are their needs? It's a two-way communication, deep dive, not just what we're putting out. I think that's important to note. So the coordination between the governor's office, King County Executive Office, the mayor's office and public health was really extraordinary. Doesn't mean there weren't some hiccups, but it was definitely better than we've ever done. And having all of those government entities work on that together was really, not only was it important, it really was a, it really was something that we hadn't done that well before. So we also spent a lot of time looking at making sure that we're reaching BIPOC communities and those with limited English proficiency, meaning that we had to rely on different methods. All the messaging could not be done with technology. Some had to be person-to-person. We used what we call culture brokers a lot, so those folks that had a relationship with government and also were connected to community partners. So people were hearing from those they trusted and it wasn't just government messaging. The city also assisted the public health, Seattle, King County with staffing for their joint information center. And just as a reminder, the joint information center is where you have public information officers from different jurisdictions or agencies come together to write a coordinated message. So that works really well. Some of the recommendations for public information were having a more formalized function for information sharing with the county and the state. I think the reason it did work well this time is because we were talking all the time, all the time. And also having a liaison position for that established ahead of time instead of in the midst of the chaos. The city joint information center staff participation in regional exercises. Again, so we're like, how are their communication protocols different from what we're doing? And what what is it that we need to make sure we're on the same page about? We also need joint information staff from all city departments. The bigger ones and the ones that are typically involved in emergencies all have a public information officer. We found that it really needs to be every department. Understanding that it might be someone who doesn't do that full time. Also identifying additional supervisory staff who can run the operations if need be. More formalized protocols for opening and closing of that joint information center. Also making sure that we have more accessible communication methods. So though for those for folks with access and functional needs, if someone uses a reader, somebody doesn't have technology. What are all of those things so that everyone in the community can get the information they need? It's also important for departments to spend some time on socializing and practicing their language access plans. So that's also in the works as we speak. Any questions on public information?
I would just like to make a plug for considering formalizing the relationship with the legislative department and specifically the city council as far as public information. We all have deep connections to our communities and I think, you know, we were all very focused on trying to get information out. And it happened sort of, I think, in an ad hoc way, but to the extent that we can formalize a relationship with the EOC on on that piece, I think that would be very useful to serve the public.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for that. Yep. All right, noted. I just want to do a quick time check. How much more time do I have?
About another 10 minutes?
Okay, perfect. I'll keep an eye on the time. Thank you. All right, so we're moving to testing and vaccination. As you know, the programs were a model both regional and nationally. And within five months of the initial pandemic response, FIRE expanded from just doing first responders to nursing homes, mobile teams and community sites. We sent up clinics all over, starting with those mobile teams from the fire department. We had pop-up sites, we had firefighters going to in homes and also fixed fixed sites. I think it's also important to note that Seattle was instrumental in getting state permission to use paramedics to do vaccination. They are qualified, as you know, paramedics are very highly trained. But to be able to use that to augment giving vaccinations had not been done before. So that was really extraordinary and other cities throughout the state copied us after that. We did provide over 260,000 vaccines to 134,000 people over a seven-month period. And we did concentrate and were successful at reaching high numbers of BIPOC individuals in all age groups. So some of the recommendations were making sure that that protocol that we used for using first responders for testing and vaccinations, that that can be replicated, it's not a one-time thing. Maintaining an inventory for 12-week supply of PPE is going to be important. Also advocating for this legislative change to hasten that process for first responders to provide tests and vaccinations. I know that's being worked on. I don't know the status of where that is now, but I can definitely find that out if you are interested. Also developing a local funding plan for these types of operations for both testing and vaccination. Recommendations are additional spots that are easy for people to access. Stockpiling generic testing materials, developing plans for not only priority setting, but also vaccination logistics. Formalizing roles with regional partners and streamlining how we do the contracts and purchasing. Also establishing parallel messaging for online and direct delivery for non-technical messaging, which I talked about earlier was really important in this arena especially. Making sure that all of the sites are ADA compliant. We had some a few issues with that that were quickly remedied. Also with signage at the sites, making sure that those were accessible, not only for limited English, but also for people with other functional needs. Continuing also our investment in community navigation using models from the other departments that you see here. OIRA, Department of Neighborhoods and Public Health. Also working with partners for a single phone information line instead of multiple. I know that at some point, Washington 211 was engaged, but having a single place for people to go instead of multiple, you know, making sure that we are keeping with so everyone's doing the same message. They're not multiple places for people to get that. Lastly, for testing and vaccination, investing in public health, that trust building prior to the next event. You know, we've all seen a kind of erosion of trust in government. Also maintaining this three-pronged approach to reach those most vulnerable. All right, any questions on testing and vaccination?
Seeing any? Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay, so the next area is social and human services. And the successes here are starting with services for for aging and disabled populations or people with access and functional needs, mass care and hygiene for those experiencing homelessness. We also worked on emergency childcare. We rapidly de-intensified or spaced out shelter sites to keep people safe. We deployed more deployed more hygiene stations throughout the city. We did vouchers for 1 million meals for people experiencing homelessness and another 1 million served to older adults. And also the Department of Education and Early Learning did their own after-action report or process, and that has led to new a new emergency childcare plan, which is really awesome. Some recommendations are to involve community partners in those plans and in the exercises we do for pandemic operations, including those partners also in purchasing logistics and access to protective, personal protective equipment through the city. We were able to provide some of that through our relationship with the county to community partners free of charge, but it was not enough. Also developing plans for accessing resources, resources such as the National Guard for emergency operations, that was also not well-defined. And they do have the ability to support vaccination and testing. A public health emergency also included new external partners that we hadn't worked with before. So making sure that we do that sooner and that that includes multicultural planning and also exercising. So some more recommendations, there was a lack of a pre-existing infrastructure and resources to scale when we got funding. And so as you know, kind of midway through, we got this influx of the American Rescue Plan funds, $300 million. So that was spent on digital equity, childcare, housing and homelessness services. But because we didn't have a mechanism to do that scaling initially, it took longer to be able to to deploy that money. And so we're looking at how we how we do that. And then also continued investment in foundational infrastructure, same for the provision of money in a in a more timely way. Okay, so any questions about human services?
Not seeing any?
Oh, and just one additional thing on the the foundational infrastructure for funding. There were different requirements for COVID funding in terms of how we distributed it. So instead of just getting a pot of money and being able to spend it on whatever we wanted, there were a lot of requirements attached to that funding. So we're working on looking at contracting changes that will give us more flexibility and how we work with the state. So if we get money and we can't use it for a particular area, are there ways that we can look at having that communication with the federal government to apply that money to other things? All right, so area seven was support for businesses and economic recovery. I will mention that, of course, as you know, this is ongoing. And really, we thought that we were going to have a lot of business recovery starting in the summer of 21. And that didn't happen in the at the magnitude that or the pace that we had anticipated. So as you know, we've had to kind of rethink what that's going to look like, what do we need to continue to focus on? So the successes, though, in this area were starting with the Small Business Stabilization Fund, which provided which provided seven thousand dollars in grants for businesses, uh I'm sorry, ten thousand um in grants for businesses with twenty-five or fewer employees. BIPOC owners were sixty-six percent of um the rounds one and five of that. And then the one round that was particularly focused on restaurants and bars, there was a heavy focus on BIPOC owners of restaurants and bars. Um, city paid sick leave and safe time for those that were still working was important for this recovery. We had new ordinances that you all are aware of and were involved in for gig workers. Um, strong interdepartmental coordination for technical support for small businesses, um including how do we do the social distancing, capacity limits, operating in the public right-of-way, so all the businesses that had um, you know, operations, restaurants, and whatnot outside. All of that happened really quickly and was really, really helpful to helping businesses um get through this. The public state um space activations of things like the Welcome Back Weeks and also support to downtown businesses um was was really important and worked well. Um, the recommendations moving forward are capturing the lessons to target support to business owners that are not supported by those um the funding that comes from the state and federal government. What really looking at what are those and how can the city help? So part of that would also be holding listening sessions with large employ- employers to understand where they might need support. We focused a lot on small businesses. Um, and once in a while, um, large businesses reached out to get information. So we're looking at how best to support them as well. Institutionalizing those processes to um expand the small uh the funding for small businesses and then making sure that we maintain the Race and So- Social Justice Index. Also displacement of folks during um the pandemic. How can we help those that have been displaced, including businesses? And then other targets or other data, excuse me, for making sure that we're really targeting the limited resources that we have. So some other recommendations are to document the um actions that happen between departments to support businesses, labor, housing, food security, and childcare. Expanding communications and technical assistance for business owners who speak languages other than English. Also expanding workforce development and retraining. So we're working with the Office of Economic Development and also sta- labor standards um on this and on helping them have an emergency staffing plan for their departments. For further leverage interdepartmental cord- collaborations and community partners for access to resources and really tying those resources to what is it that the community needs? The the most um where the most needs is, I'm making sure those resources are targeted there. All right, we just have one more section um on staff redeployment, but any questions here on business and economics?
Thank you. Um, our Economic Development Chair, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you very much. Um, Director Mayor, on uh regarding large employers, um the the executive summary says on page uh fourteen that um something like it's important that the city listen to the interests of large employers and share at least information that can be helpful, which I agree with. Um, and then you talk about listening sessions. So these points were reinforced in the uh where you went into more detail in the report, or Burke did. So um I think that large employers, because they're large, um it should are a great way to get information out. And um, you know, even if it's not possible to speak with large employers, you could use the uh chamber or D S A or neighborhood chambers or whatever to help get information out uh for the potential next major civil emergency, I would say that. So um, because I just assumed that they would be uh disseminating this information. And then I had a question about the Business Stabilization Fund, Small Business Stabilization Fund. And I don't know if you would know this, but um or maybe my colleagues know, how many, how much was deposited in that? Or and um is there any left, or how many businesses were aided by that? And if um if that's not known by folks here, I can follow up with the executive.
So my understanding was that um, excuse me, that there was ten thousand dollars that was provided to small businesses through grants. Um, I don't know if there was more available in that fund that didn't get distributed. Um, and I don't know if any other um committee members know that. If not, I can find that out.
I'll follow up.
Okay. Okay, and also I very much appreciate the information about the information sharing with large employers and also the chamber. Um, we're also um for emergency management, always remember that even though the large employer has a lot of resources, the individual employees um also, you know, were people that live and work here, and sometimes they need our help. So thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
And I know you had a lot going on, so this is not a criticism.
There's always ways to improve, and communication always comes up. For every event I've ever been in, um, communication always is a place we need to expand on, so thank you. All right, anything else on business and economics? Okay, I'm almost finished. Okay, cool. All right, staff redeployment. So this is the movement of staff, city staff, into a job that's not their normal job. Meaning, what is it something they could do to help with the emergency? Um, that's not part of what they do. And as you know, there were people who had to move to remote operations that maybe their job didn't lend itself to that. And so how can we use them in the most efficient manner possible? A lot of talented people. Um, so we're looking at making sure we um do that, not only in a thoughtful way, but that we have some policy. We make sure people are um compensated, all of those important things about that. So early in the pandemic, redeployment was kind of, and when I say personal, it was, you know, conversations that people had had. There was not a formalized process, so that's not necessarily a good idea. Um, later, we looked at how do we formalize? We talked a lot with Labor and the Mayor's Office um and other department directors of looking at how do we have a agreements to protect people, make sure they're compensated, and we use their skills well. I T D did develop a technology platform um for large-scale redeployment, um but we don't yet have the policy. So looking at um uh first of all, making sure everyone across the city understands what it means to redeploy folks. We would never put people, for example, in a something they're not comfortable with. Um, and we also want to make sure that people are const- um um fairly compensated if they're doing something outside their normal work. So we did some um agreements with Labor for that, but um it really needs to be um there needs to be a a a policy, also looking at um augmenting that technology platform so that it would include an inventory of skills. What are the skills most needed? And then also practice redeployment when we do exercises. So having an enterprise-wide system and centralizing um the H R, H R that needs to happen around that. So sorry, I didn't mean to do that. So right now, S D H R has is in the process of looking at developing a citywide policy for this. It even comes up in smaller instances. For example, right now, you heard about the big fire that happened um at the Madison Apartments. Um, there was a number of people displaced and we're looking at shelter staff to augment um parks and whatnot. So this is really something that can come up quite frequently, not just when there's a really big disaster. So you'll be hearing more about that. We are, S D H R is looking at it as well as um the other department directors will also be engaged in that. All right, any questions about redeployment?
Just want to say that this is an area that um I uh felt like we were sort of figuring out as we went along, but am just so pleased. And um it's one of the things coming out of this this emergency, this crisis that has really given me a a lot of reason for um optimism and a lot of, you know, just really warm and fuzzy feelings about the city family and our willingness to push up our sleeves and all work together. So um really, really appreciate that so many did so many things that they weren't necessarily prepared to do. But um yeah, uh just there's a lot of a lot of strength in um in our workforce here.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I agree. It was really amazing. And then we also used that kind of those ad hoc um practices during the winter storm last year, too, because we needed additional staff. So yeah, it is great. Thank you. All right, so the next thing that happens is um an improvement plan. So looking at all those recommendations I talked about, how do we do this? So it's not just like, oh, this is a good idea, but how are we actually going to make sure this happens? So we are almost finished with that. Um, departments have input. It will go to the Strategic Working Group. Um, there'll be a timeline included. So again, and we'll just be like, yeah, it's a great idea. Like, how how long is it going to take? Do we need money? Um, so you will see all of that based on those recommendations in each deep dive that will lead and supporting departments for that. Um, and then some of those improvement items will be in this infectious disease plan update. You know, so who knew we would need an infectious disease plan? But we're also working very closely with public health for that. Um, other other issues refer to that emergency operations planning update. So last thing, um, the input on partner and jurisdiction organizations after action plan. So our effort, now that we're finished, is also informing what our partners in the region are doing. We did ours first, and we will continue to work on those improvement items. And I will have that plan along with the calendar and all of that for you soon. So that is the end of my presentation.
It's a lot. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson. No, no, you're all good. Okay. Fantastic. Well, um, really appreciate uh you, Director Mayor, for the work that you and your team at O E M uh have coordinated during this emergency. And thank you, of course, as well for this after-action plan. It's such an important tool to collect feedback and analyze our actions um and identifying areas needing improvement. I really appreciate this in-depth review so that we can show our commitment to continuously work through improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity. It's always good to be with you. Um, and it really was a citywide, city-family effort. Um, it was just really incredible. I was, I'm, I feel very privileged to have been part of that. So thank you.
Will the clerk please read in Agenda Item Number One?
Uh, Committee Agenda Item Number Two, two thousand, uh, two thousand twenty-one, Seattle Fire Department Race and Social Justice Initiative Report for Briefing and Discussion.
Thank you so much to welcome Chief Scoggins and his staff to the table. Can we do some quick introductions and we'll just hand it over you to you to uh walk us through it?
Sure. Good morning, um, Councilmember Herbl and members of the Public Safety Committee. We really appreciate you allowing us a few minutes to talk about some of the work that's going on under the Seattle Fire Department. I have with me our two change team leads today, who will be doing the presentation, Captain Doug Johnson and a member of our professional staff, Julie George. So they're going to walk you through the presentation, and um we'll take questions as we go. And then we'll wrap it up um when we conclude. So I'll turn it over to Captain Johnson and Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so for twenty twenty-one, COVID, COVID nineteen and other challenges, um, big challenges were severe staffing shortages, altered work schedules, and institution inequities. R S J focused on updating workplace policies and practices, targeted firefighter recruitment process, increasing increasing retention of firefighter recruits. And our analysis and outcome were workplace assignments, promotional processes, firefighter recruit application pool, and recruit school retention that we'll be talking about in this presentation. COVID nineteen challenges, in twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and seventeen uniform separations. We had four deaths within a period of three months. Two of them were very unexpected. Um, we had twenty-two dismissals, thirty-one resignations, and sixty retirements. That's a lot of movement and loss in the department in a short period of time. We had a hundred and thirteen firefighter vacancies. We had a total of six hundred and twenty-three isolated or quarantined employees and a significant segment of professional employees with alternative work arrangement schedules. Some days you would come into work, um, you would be trying to help out um in other departments because you were the only one on the floor, and the phone's ringing. And you you dove in and you helped out.
Before we move on, could you just, over what period of time are we looking at here?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Over what period of time are we looking at?
This is uh twenty twenty-one.
So this is for the year of twenty twenty-one. Okay, thank you.
So the one thing I think about when I when I see this quote, "Great leadership requires that you surround yourself with people of diverse perspectives who can disagree with you without fear or retaliation." And I'm, myself and the change team are huge proponents in um employee empowerment. And one of the things that we do appreciate is the fact that with Chief Scoggins and Helen Fitzpatrick, that we are all at the table, we have the same goal. Sometimes our roads are a little bit different, getting to that goal. But um we're always at the table if something comes up. If and at times we do get disagree, but we still keep moving forward, and that's appreciated. Updating workplace policies and processes. And a lot of the institutional disparities that the team focuses on is the low overall percentage of women and people of color participating in promotional processes. And the strategy is to be inclusive. We have inclusive language added to department memos and policies and operating guidelines. But not only have the language added, but to be um to practice it and not just let it get lost in policy and operating guidelines, but to be intentional. Also equitable changes in the promotional process to allow it to be more inclusive. So on the next page is an example of one of um the policies that we have um in our policy and operating guidelines. And it's to let people know that, you know, when there's an opportunity to work on a committee or to be part of uh developing a training or participate as a facilitator in classes, those are all things that help somebody as they want to move forward in life. And not to have discretionary choosing, but to let everybody have an opportunity and an opportunity to be a part in that. So like I said, even though it's written in our policy and guidelines, but let's be intentional and about looking at it, understanding it, and utilizing our new policy. So if you look at our current makeup of the department, there's two hundred and forty officers, lieutenants, captains, and chiefs. Ninety-five percent of the leadership is male, which leaves five percent female leadership. Eighty percent of the leadership is white, leaving twenty percent of um other racial makeups of the department, which twenty percent is is not a lot. Um, so going forward, one of the things that that we talked about in the last slide was it making things intentional so people can be a part of of something in order to move themselves forward. And one of them was to look at um the oral board. So historically, marginalized groups do better on oral boards than they do on the standardized testing. So thanks to Lieutenant Baki for taking the lead on this. She um and Captain Johnson worked on a new promotional scoring process. Can you flip this slide, please? So the old process was sixty percent waited for a written exam. Forty percent um was waited for the oral board with a seventy percent passing score. With the work that they accomplished, the new process is fifty percent wait for written and fifty percent for oral board with the seventy percent passing score. Are any questions? The next intentional thing that we work on is the targeted firefighter The next intentional thing that we work on is the targeted firefighter recruitment process. Currently, there's nine hundred and sixty-four representative employees. Out of that, eight hundred and ninety-eight are, are male. So we have sixty-six female firefighters. Seventy-four percent firefighters are white. And then it goes down to um one point five American Indian, five percent Asian, six percent Hispanic Latino, six percent African American, seven percent two or more. We had, due to the staffing shortage, we did have an accelerated targeted recruitment which focused a lot on the outreach to the community. It was open from March one and the final day that you could take your test was um April nineteenth. Which is generally our process would be open for three months during the summertime to capture people coming home from college. Um so a lot of work went into being intentional in these six, seven weeks that we had it open. Um one of the things that we did is Seattle Fire hosted. Um the King County Fire Chiefs Association have a diversity and equity recruitment workshop. They have them two a year. Chief, do you want to speak on that a little bit?
Sure. So the King County Fire Chiefs, um this is an issue that's facing our region, our state, so we are trying to take intentional actions. So we've done a, a number of things through our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee that I serve as the chair of. One of the things we started was a diversity recruitment workshop. Our goal is to do two a year and we're rotating it around King County. We've done two so far. In December, we did one in Bellevue and in April, we did uh the second one in Seattle. And the next one will be coming up in the fall in Renton and we're planning our events also for twenty twenty-three. The other thing that we've done is hosted women in EMS and fire events to give women in our region a two-day experience, hands-on experience um of what it means to be a firefighter. They get to put the gear on, they get to do the work. We've done seven of those over the last four years. So we were trying to be very intentional in our efforts and how we recruit and how we communicate. So this event, um it's good for the young people in our region to see all the different patches in the room because Seattle can't hire everybody. So our goal is to try to increase diversity throughout our region. So that's what this event was on April ninth.
Thank you. Um I did have a question about the um, the continued use of the oral boards. Can you um talk about whether or not we are continuing their use given um the, the good outcomes that we're seeing from them?
Uh can you repeat the question on?
The use of the oral boards. Are they, are they continuing? For some reason I um had recollected that there was some issue with their uh continuation in uh twenty twenty-two.
Oh, as far as I know, and Chief, maybe you know uh can speak to it also. As far as I know, we still do the oral boards for promotionals. Um are you talking entry level?
Uh entry level, yes.
Entry level, it's a little different because we're a little rushed on trying to get uh people through uh because of our short staffing. And we are doing the oral boards. It's on the side of the fire department now. And uh Chief, can you elaborate at all on it?
Sure. Yes, we will continue to use the oral board. Um so the written has been done. Uh we'll receive a list from Public Safety Civil Service probably in the next two or three weeks and that'll be the certified register. And then when we get the register and we start our hiring process for our February of twenty twenty-three class, uh the first piece of that will be the oral boards that will um take off probably in August or September. And that should give us enough time to get enough people through the process to get them hired by February of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
So here was just a, a look at some of our social media outreach um of different pictures that we had advertising that we had open application period. And on the next page, we had up to five languages for the social media ads and that went out to different local um community newspapers. Uh we did a huge hit on um the internet versus Facebook, Instagram. And then we had to get a little creative. So six weeks really is a short period of time when you're testing for the department. You know, one, you want to make sure that the word gets out, everybody knows. Um we weren't having um as many things uh in person as we generally would. So one of the things that we did for the month of March is we had these three different webinars um that were live webinars that people uh for free could go onto Facebook and participate. Um the first one talked about just an overall view of what to expect when you're in the hiring process. Um the second one, which is a mystery to a lot of people is, you know, what do you expect when you're in recruit school? So we had um two different firefighters who recently graduated out of recruit school um head up that webinar. And then the last one was different opportunities that there is within the department. And all of these webinars were well received. At the end of the presentation, the public could um type in questions um through Facebook and, and get their questions answered. And then from there, if they still had further questions, they could give us a call in the office the next day and we were more than happy to answer their questions.
And you know, it should be noted that the webinars were recorded. So even if the individual couldn't attend the live webinar, they were able to go to Seattle Fire Jo- SeattleFireJobs.com and they can click on and watch the webinar, any of these. Um that was really helpful because a lot of people do to live for their work schedules. They may not fit the exact timeframe when it's live, but what we found was many people went back and watched it later and some people watched it multiple times.
We, during this time, we had a few in-person um events. We continued to plant the seed and participate with high schools and their programs um to give the kids an opportunity to learn about the career as a firefighter. There was a couple of community fairs. And then recruit school retention.
Yeah, as you can see, uh the recruit school attention really this, this whole presentation is, has three prongs with, we have firefighters. Um we're trying to recruit people. And thirdly, we have recruit school, which we have uh always have some challenges in that we are trying to instruct or teach people how to respond to any emergency in the city within sixteen weeks. So that is a big bite of an apple when these individuals haven't even ever masked up or put bunking gear on or even know where to sit on a fire engine. So right now, we're trying to do classes of eighty. Uh this slide says thirty-five to forty. So we are really trying to up our numbers. Uh and that is a challenge for people that are new because we have to have repetition and rep, and reps um to be able to operate a chainsaw safely. You're going to have to cut with a chainsaw repeatedly. Same thing if we are attacking a fire in a residential structure in a basement. So getting those reps through with eighty people in sixteen weeks is a big challenge uh for us. I do want to take a, a second and just not only thank the chief uh Scoggins to my right, but also the person behind me who's Helen and really advocating and pushing uh for all of these. And one of the things that they do in leadership is put people in the right places, you know, at the right time. And right now we have a deputy chief in training, uh Melissa Candy, who I believe is the right person at the right time and really advocating for a lot of the challenges that we have in keeping women and uh people of color uh in the recruit school as well as making sure they're trained adequately to the national state and state uh standards. So the, the women recruit retention significantly uh diminishes in, in recruit school right now. Or where the challenge is, we lose about half the women in recruit school every time. So we have some things in place that they can come back, um do some exercises, uh workout, and make sure that they're psychologically and mentally, mentally re- ready. Also, people of color, we've had some, have some challenges and right now it's uh we, we, the challenge of Asians uh being, staying in, in recruit school. Uh so we've done curriculum changes to create more equity in candidates without prior firefighting experiences. And I think that is on the next slide, what those curriculum changes are. Uh class of one thirteen, which was August of twenty twenty, uh we had, of those sixteen weeks, we chose uh week five as a rest and recovery week. There's a lot of uh bookwork and testing that week. They're not as on the drill court as often. It gives, give them a chance to have that body heal. Uh they also adjusted, or we also adjusted, uh having both engine and truck for all recruits to uh maintain skill retention. In the past, we would, we have the school separated from truck work uh which would, for example, be cutting with chainsaws and forcible entry and engine work, which is using and manipulating the hose lines. Uh we have combined those, so we have more retention and we don't have skilled degradation over the two-week period that you're on, just doing one skill. Uh February of twenty twenty-one, uh the leadership in training decided to refine the methodology, methodology uh and rotations to increase equipment experience. I believe that we stopped pumping at re- uh in recruit school in the past and also focusing on what they are going to be doing when they go out to operations uh which is riding the tailboard, uh pulling hose, uh forcible entry, et cetera.
Under analysis and outcomes, um one, updating policies and processes. Um actively monitoring, monitoring the percentages of historical disadvantage of groups and fire service supply for promotional opportunities for meaningful increases. So we constantly are looking at the numbers of who is not going forward. Um and keeping, I, I would say more people are involved in this than, than what we've had in the past. And then we also continue, which is really tough sometimes during a staffing shortage, is changing the current process and policies of discretionary selection. Like for example, it would be tech teams, whether hazmat team or technical rescue team. Um when the list is exhausted, the captains have the discretion to go out and do their own selection for who is going to take that seat. And we're still continually trying to, to, you know, mitigate uh against institutional racism and improper bias by doing that. Um but some of these things are tough when you're short. Second part of the analysis and outcomes is targeted recruitment process for twenty twenty-three that we just went through, that we're reaffirming local community engagement, getting to know where the community better, partnering ship with the community. And outreach is, is resulting in significant percentages of applicants in our backyard. So with this last process, we did have five hundred and thirty applicants from nine eight one one eight, which I thought was pretty incredible. Um we're also looking at determining why there is a pattern of significant applicant drop-offs in the early part of the process. And you'll see this on the next slide. We have talked to um Seattle HR and NTN in the application and scheduling and testing to help us look at and implement new uh specific and individualized assistance for these lost applicants from historically disadvantaged groups. And then, and then next slide, this time um on the register that took the test, there was two thousand twenty-two from Washington. And there was nine hundred and thirty-two from out of state. So we had a total of almost three thousand that applied.
And if I can just ask you to pause right there, that's in six weeks. So from March first to April nineteenth, we had twenty-nine hundred people turn in applications to join the Seattle Fire Department. To me, that's pretty significant. It showed that our marketing and recruitment strategy worked with our public affairs team and our recruitment and outreach team. So I told our team that we should really be proud of that because in six weeks we received twenty-nine hundred applications for the Seattle Fire Department. So I just wanted to make sure I paused and acknowledged that.
It's definitely worthy of a, of a pause. Yes, for sure. It's amazing. So on the next slide, you'll get to see for um. Oh, did it flip to the next slide? So an example of what I was talking about in the earlier is if you look at black or African-American, you had three hundred and fifty-two that applied. You had two hundred and fifty-six that scheduled the exam, but only a hundred and eighty-four completed the process. And that number goes on to show like the number of females that first applied was three hundred and fifty-four, three hundred and one scheduled. But only two hundred and thirty-one completed the process. So we're curious to what happens to those people that drop out. Um and, and I'll be curious to see once we get the numbers from NTN and Seattle HR is, is out of the five hundred and thirty that applied out of the zip code nine eight one one eight, how many of them stuck with it? And if they didn't stick with it, why, wh- what are we missing to keep them engaged in the process?
If you just a pause here, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Um thank you for everything you're doing and for daylighting these, these numbers for us. I actually um went through an academy in California many years ago, so I'm a little bit familiar with this process. And just looking at the numbers, so, so if I take the information, information from slide nine, fifteen, and twenty, let's just stay on this slide twenty. So slide nine is, says there's seven percent female uh in the ranks, uh rank and file. Uh their slide fifteen says um, you know, the recruits um sort of go down over time. Um in slide twenty, um if I look at the female uh row here, um it looks like the percentage from the applied all the way to the end stays at about eleven percent, eleven to twelve percent. So um it, it seems like what would need to happen is to go further upstream to the high schools and uh maybe a first-year community college uh and to, to get people to, you know, study fire science, to get involved earlier in high school. And perhaps um through those studying to be EMTs, um getting them interested in firefighting. Um so going further upstream, you know, in high school and EMT programs seems to be, because if you're, if you've got seven percent currently and you've got eleven percent making it through here, it's it seems like you won't move the needle dramatically unless you get more applicants to uh, to get that eleven, twelve percent applicants to go up. In terms of why people drop off during the process, since this happened in April, perhaps um there needs to be an exit interview process maybe done by HR, you know, why people dropped out. And then you can re-engineer upfront how to prevent that drop off. But it just, it seems like the, the way to get the number up for female uh recruits is to go earlier in the process to high schools, but I don't know your thoughts on that, if you could.
To be honest with you, I'm a big proponent for the high schools. I just had a daughter graduate and I find that high schools right now are, are really looking at the kids going into college. Um which I think is a, a great avenue. And sometimes you have a kid who's, that's not the avenue that could be for them. But I tried to get invited to the table saying this is a viable, this is a viable opportunity to have a career. Um and, and we're finding that the, the high schools are being, it, it was hard during COVID, but once we come, they're always like, oh my God, will you come again next year and let us know? So that, that is a very important one for just me sitting at the fire department, that we continue to plant the seed. Um and I, I, I think the, the other part to this is, is continue with the fire and the, the women in EMS um and, and have them believe that yes, you could do this job as well.
Do the community col- follow-up question, Chair? Um do the community colleges offer fire science programs that are connected with the departments in the area?
Uh and so to answer the first part of the question on the high school. So we partner with Seattle Public Schools. Daniel Goldson is the principal of Seattle Public Schools Technical Programs. They have a fire program at Seattle Public Schools. So we work with them. As a matter of fact, last month, the students in the program just came out to the fire boat. We gave them a ride to close out their year. Um so we are connecting with the public schools and trying to get further upstream. In September, North Seattle College started the Fire Science Degree Program, um really well received by the community. They thought that they would get two classes of thirty. They actually got four classes of thirty. And so we continue to partner with them. Later on this summer, uh we're working on setting up a career. Later on this summer, uh we're working on setting up a career fair at North Seattle College and um continuing to expand that. So we're thinking just like you. Um also, as Julie mentioned, our women in EMS and fire program um is, we're big supporters of that. And then continuing to get out into the community to turn the light on in the room to let people know that this is a really good opportunity for them.
Thank you.
Oh, can we go back to that last slide really quick?
Um, yep.
So I wanted to just point out, we had twenty-nine hundred people apply. We had just under two thousand complete all phases of that process. So we'll be doing a debrief with Public Safety Civil Service this month on the why. Um so to try to understand how that fall off happened. But as um Councilmember Peterson just pointed out, you can look at the trending from the percentages of those who applied to those who completed the process. And about thirty-five percent of our population that completed the po- uh process is actually people of color. If you look at our list from the past, it wasn't that, it wasn't that um high of a number. So our recruitment efforts are paying off. They aren't where we want them to be, but they are paying off if you just look at the trending there on how the percentages are. And all of those percentages on the far-right column are higher than the percentages that we have in the department. So we are trending in the right direction. It's going to take some time to get there, but I I I believe our efforts will start to pay off over time.
Under analysis and outcomes, number three, recruit school retention. Um you know, we're continuing to partner with the Equity Committed Training Division to increase retention of female and persons of color recruits through beneficial and incremental changes in recruit school, which is huge. For many years that I worked at the department, there was no changes in recruit school. And now that we're at the table talking about it, it it's, for me, it's a big win. Um and then monitoring or surveying success of recruits to to better understand what additional changes could enhance um and could enhance more retained diverse recruits for tomorrow's firefighters and EMTs. Um they, they're always welcome to suggestions, to have meetings. Um and like I said, that years ago, that wasn't part of the face at the fire department. So now to have that, that we can sit down and have conversations is a great improvement. And diversity is being invited to a party, but invitation is not enough. Inclusion is being asked to dance at the party. Participation is the key to effectively combating racism and discrimination. You know, our, our, from the RSJ team, our envision is that people being hired into the department, whether you're a civilian or uniform, that you're, you should know on your first day that you should be able to bring your dancing shoes with you. And I, it's, we're making changes, sometimes not as quick as the team would like to see it. Um but we appreciate all the support that we get from Chief Skoggins and from Helen um and the leadership to, in order to move things forward. Any questions?
Just, um, I want to note that these are uh efforts I know the department has been working on for a very long time. I know that all of our departments throughout the city um have had RSJI goals um and focus on policy uh adjustments to um to live those values. But I, my recollection is that um the fire department has been really working hard towards uh diversifying the department uh in in a way that predates those intentional um objectives of the RSJI initiative. And um I I recognize as well that the reason why you do this work is because um you recognize how important it is um to live your values as a department, help us live our values as a city, to make sure that we we do have a diversified uh workforce serving the public. And I also just want to take a minute. Um the the policies and recruitment efforts aside, I um appreciate all the work of all the men and women in the Seattle Fire Department, but really uh want to thank Chief Skoggins for his commitment to this work um and the individual actions that he has taken himself to um make clear to everybody in the department what the expectations are of the department, to let everybody know that um the fire department um uh has uh no tolerance for for racism uh and anti um white supremacy i- within within the department. And the um the efforts that he has made to express that in a way that is clear um and um something uh and and just holding folks accountable for that. I think it's just a really um important example for for our city and important to make sure that new people coming into the apartment feel feel welcome and secure and safe in doing the life-saving work that you all do. So, thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just thank Captain Johnson and Julie George for leading our change team. I know it's a really hard job. We have some very honest and hard conversations, but that's how we make change along the way. We know we have a very difficult job to do, as the community got to see once again on Sunday evening at Eighth and Madison. Our firefighters did an absolutely incredible job with eight rescues. Some of you may have seen the picture of one of our firefighters bringing the mom and the baby down the ladder. There were more people came that came out of the building, two are still in critical condition. But we know it's a very, very difficult job, so we have to make sure our folks are well-trained. And we don't do anything alone. We were there on scene with our partners from SPD. The mayor showed up to talk to the residents, and then the work still goes on today as Director Mayor mentioned on on her presentation with OEM and HSD and um and the Office of Housing and Parks to try to continue the work to make sure those people get a place to live. So we know it's a hard job, um but we're going to continue to push forward, and thank you for your ongoing support. It is appreciated. Thank you.
Well, the clerk, please read in agenda item number three.
Committee Agenda Item Number Three, First Quarter Seattle Police Department Finance and Response Time Report for Briefing and Discussion.
All right, switching back to a virtual presentation, thank you. This is a presentation on the quarterly updates requested by council from the Seattle Police Department. Greg Doss of Council Central Staff will be presenting. Uh the staffing portion of the quarterly reporting was included in a previous meeting, so we're going to be focusing on the finances and response time report. Greg, could you um please lead us through the presentation?
Thank you. Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and uh committee members. Um Greg Doss, Central Staff, as uh the Chair mentioned here today, because I'm going to talk with you about uh SPD finances and uh response times. I'll try to make the finance component as painless as possible and go as quick as possible. Um as Councilmember Herbold mentioned, uh these are presentations that come quarterly and normally would include a a component on staffing. However, uh this one will not include the staffing because we handled the staffing uh, the Q-one component of that on April twenty-six uh in order to address the in hiring incentives um uh discussion and the uh resolution and bill that was before the committee at that time. So we're just going to jump into finances and response times today. So uh with that, I'm going to jump right in and uh feel free to ask me questions along the way. So finance monitoring. Okay, so after a couple of years of these presentations, members are probably getting familiar with the fact that almost all of SPD's expenditures fall into essentially three big categories that make up about ninety-six to ninety-seven percent of all department spending. And as you can see, that's still the case here in uh the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. Um as you can see, we've got three categories here: salary and benefits, overtime and allocated costs. Allocated costs being the expenditures that are made for, oh, the buildings, the fleet, um various kinds of heating and cooling, um all of the kinds of facilities that you would expect. Um and uh the big picture here is that spending is once again uh down. It's down by about nine percent from eighty-six to seventy-nine million. And um that is because um staffing. Uh the largest expenditures that the agency has is in the area of salary and benefits. And so um with the um with the decline in staffing, there's, there's less of a need to pay officers, and so spending is down overall. We'll get down into the details here in a little bit. But um really what uh the other big takeaway from this donut uh chart is that overtime as a percent of spending has doubled. Um and uh that is a result of, again, staffing issues at SPD and the need to rely on overtime to be able to deliver services. And so um we'll talk about that as we move along. So this next table that is in front of you takes a look at those three big categories um over the last two years. As you can see, you've got on the left twenty twenty-one and on the right twenty twenty-two. It takes a look at the expenditures for those categories. And then it uh adjusts those expenditures or or um measures those expenditures against uh the budget. So how how far are we spending against the adopted budget? And so if I take, for example, that top line, salary and benefits, um and I jump to twenty twenty-two, you'll see that uh so far through March, the agency has spent fifty-eight million dollars, and that equates to roughly twenty-three percent of its um annual budget for salary and benefits. What does that mean? Um it's underspending its salary and benefits budget, and I think uh members all know that's because there have been um more folks that have left, officers have left than was um originally estimated by the staffing plan. And so there are some salary savings that are available right now, about four-point-five million in salary savings. And we have had some discussions about how the executive and the council are using those salary savings. So not going to go into that, but you are seeing that here. Um when it comes to overtime, you'll see that the overtime expenditures have doubled um compared with last year. Um now, this is not too surprising because uh the pandemic was in, you know, full swing last year. So a lot of the events and things that were um requiring SPD services weren't requiring them. But uh that said, it is uh somewhat worrisome, uh at least to me as an analyst, that uh the department is at twenty-four percent of its budget through March. And I got a sneak peek at its um April budget. And I know that if you look through April, the next month, it's actually thirty-five percent spent. And that is, that's a bit of a problem because when you look at SPD overtime spending, most of its overtime spending is going to occur in the warm weather months when you have events and you have a a need for public safety uh patrols, either on Alki or related to um violence in in specific areas. And so if you have uh twenty-four percent now or thirty-five, as I just mentioned, through April, that's a bit of a a worrisome sign um that that uh the overtime budget uh might not be sufficient to make it through the year. So um that is me saying that. That is not the department saying that. They have uh confidence that they will make it through the year. Um and and I was told such, and uh, you know, we'll have to just watch that one, um that measure as we move through the year. So moving along, the next categories we see are um the uh next categories we see are some of the smaller ones. And so the smaller ones uh you see here are separation pay, services, consultant, legal, other, um travel and training, discretionary purchases, and um other charges and capital. So one thing I want to note right off here is that um SPD did have a mistake in its coding of expenditures. So when you're looking at the absolute dollars that were spent in twenty twenty-two and you see three-point-three million, um it's actually more like two-point-nine. They um wound up putting some grant expenditures, uh a few hundred thousand into other charges that didn't belong there, and the capital piece doesn't belong there either. That was also a uh an error. So um tho- those two pieces shouldn't be there, and it's actually a little bit more like two-point-nine million. But um that said, uh these numbers that show that uh the expenditures are quite low relative to budget, let's say six percent or twelve percent or thirteen percent, uh I would caution, um I would caution members to uh take, take those with a grain of salt. Um the department has uh in these areas has put in encumbrances uh where they have um more or less blocked off some of their budget authority because they are planning to make some big purchases. And so you'll see under my second bullet here that uh in the area of um services and consultants, they're planning on making about um two-point-five million of um of uh of uh services and consultants and one-point-three million in services other. And what that will do is that will bring that line um to about sixty percent expended. And then in the discretionary purchases line, they're planning to spend uh just about two million dollars there, and that would bring that line to fifty-eight percent expended. So um when you look at these numbers here against the budget, I don't want you to get the um perception that there's a lot of money sitting around. Actually, they've locked up a lot of money uh in contracts where they are expecting to spend the money. The um money that they're expecting to spend on services, consultants and services other are primarily around the technology projects that the council funded them for this year. As you may recall, there are about five different um very expensive technology projects that they're going to be undertaking. And then the discretionary purchase one, um tho- those purchases that are online are for a backlog of tasers, ammo, ballistic armor and helmets that add up to about one-point-eight million dollars. And so more of that category is spent than than what you see here. Um in terms of separation pay, you'll see that it's thirty-one percent expended through March. Um that uh probably shouldn't come as a surprise. We, we know that there are more separations than expected in the first quarter. Um the thought was originally that there would be about twenty-four separations, and it turns out there's about forty-three. Um so I've thrown a lot at you in the last five minutes. I'm going to stop and ask if there's any questions before I move on to overtime.
Thank you. Um just want to put a uh pin in the discussion around discretionary purp- purchases, um since there's been some some interest over the last um week around that particular line item. I think to to sum up, according to the report at this time, the uh budget control level for SPD for discretionary per- uh purchases is uh four-point-five million for the year. They've spent about a million through um through this report. They've encumbered about another two million, so they have about one-point-five million in the discretionary purchases BCL. I also want to highlight that um their um SPD does have authority to move funds between BCLs without authorization. The exception to that, of course, are the BCLs related to salaries uh and uh costs associated with salaries. So um there is, I think, more flexibility within SPD's budget than um some might assume uh from uh public discussions around purchases recently. Um but um the the um, I think the the upshot I, from from the discussions around repairing assets owned by the by the police department is I'm very interested in learning uh more about the process that the police department goes through in um identifying requests for the Seattle Foundation and how um for for the Seattle Foundation to fundraise and how they prioritize around um the use of their discretionary budget um under Understand some of the things that Greg mentioned as costs that there are have already been encumbrances for obviously high priority items for for the department. But I would posit that a twenty-five-thousand-dollar expenditure to fix an asset already owned by the department is a a high priority as well. So looking forward to learning more about how the department communicates with the foundation on priorities for fundraising. Moving on.
Hey, all right, moving on. So into overtime monitoring. Overtime monitoring, I'm going to start out with some of the smaller categories of spending. And and as you can see, the biggest problem area for SPD in twenty-twenty-two is the miscellaneous category. And the miscellaneous category is one that contains emphasis patrols, which were effectively defunded in twenty-twenty. But, or I'm sorry, defunded in twenty-twenty-one, but which were being used extensively in twenty-twenty after a major shooting downtown, as you may recall, in the Pike Pine area. So that's why you see such a large bar there in twenty-twenty and almost nothing in twenty-twenty-one. In twenty-twenty, eighty percent of that bar that you are seeing is for spending on those four areas that I have below Pike and Pine, Twelthing Jackson, shots fired and nightlife knife nightlife emphasis. And it it is the case that that is those activities are taking a lot of the department's overtime through the first three months of the year. It has taken about eight-thousand-four-hundred hours and about seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Also up in this chart compared to the last couple of years is criminal investigations. And I note in the slide that violent crimes is up, including homicide. But it's really all of violent crimes. And so it's it's everything that goes along with that, that would include, say, evidence overtime and also overtime for crime scene investigation. And that would make sense, given that we're seeing overtime for shots fired areas and 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 other violent crime scenes. So those are those are two areas that are particularly stretched. Other areas are not as not as out of sorts with prior years. Then move on to the next one, which is the the major three drivers of overtime, as as I would put it. And these I put into a different category and onto a different scale. And moving left to right, one of the biggest drivers, patrol operations, you can see is 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 uncomparable at this point to the last couple of years. As I go through and I look at the data for patrol operations, I can see that fifty-five to eighty-eight percent, depending on which precinct I'm looking at, of the overtime for that particular precinct is pretty much for patrol augmentation and sick leave backfill. It is the case that that that's just being driven by the staffing shortage. It's the case that the Community Response Group, that is that group that fills in on nine-one-one response, their overtime is up a hundred percent since Q-one last year. Then in events, events fall into sort of two categories. One is events that are just general citywide events. And these include the Seattle Center events. And then the other is the sporting events, and both of these are up. If you look at the middle one, events including Seattle Center, not as high as twenty-nineteen, but fairly high. And this is, if I look at the data here, what I see is that a lot of these events are climate pledge arena concerts. The climate pledge arena is creating a lot of business for SPD. And definitely in the last category, in the sporting events category. As I looked at the data there, what I found is that the Kraken events are taking a lot of hours, about four-thousand-one-hundred hours for Kraken events at a cost of about three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand to the city. Those are dollars that receive some reimbursement. I'm working with the City Budget Office to figure out how much we perceive from the Kraken for those events. But would note that SPD is not, does not receive any appropriation authority for those events. So that that does make it harder on on their budget to have to absorb that. All right, so I'm going to. Yeah, thanks. Sorry, should have stopped again.
Just trying to understand a little bit about how this is laid out. Page seven and page eight are both called overtime hours by category. But they're not all on the, is it just that the chart wouldn't all fit on the same page? Or is there another reason why these are broken out into two slides?
It's because it's the scale. These other categories can basically go under sixteen-thousand hours. And these are are bigger ones. They they can go up to thirty-thousand hours. And these are are bigger drivers.
Got it. And then what is the what is the thinking? I understand that they're probably coded differently, but what is the thinking? Or what what should we be thinking about the fact that there are two separate categories for events? Why not just combine the two if you really want to see what, how much how much overtime is going for events and to try to compare it to other categories? It looks like we're deflating it by breaking it out into two different categories.
Well, I think I I can't I can't speak to. What can I say here? The these two categories are are treated differently from a cost reimbursement standpoint. Prior to climate pledge arena coming onboard with the Kraken, and I and I don't know the situation with the Kraken. Sporting events, events that happen at the stadiums, they have contracts with, say, the Mariners or the Seahawks. And we get pretty good cost recovery there. Those events are close to one-hundred percent cost recovery. The 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 teams pay for the manned posts at the street closures, and they pay for traffic control. Events including Seattle Center, those events are governed under the SMC on special events. And those events do not receive good cost reimbursement. Those events are at best sixty-seven percent, I believe, and go down from there depending on what kind of arrangement the city has with the promoter that happens to be putting the event on. So from a cost recovery standpoint, it helps to track them separately. SPD manages them somewhat separately in the sense that they, the sporting events are predictable and they can schedule them in advance. The other events are are not and sometimes come in very quickly. Those are some differences. Why they wouldn't put them together is is something I can ask them and and get back to you on.
I think I think that's a pretty good explanation. If we're if we're focused on the the issue of the costs, it's helpful to know that the events that were receiving nearly one-hundred percent reimbursement is coming in a little bit under ten-thousand hours. But if what you're looking at and focused on is the prioritization of overtime among different functions of the department and seeking to have a conversation around prioritizing overtime for, for instance, patrol operations or criminal investigations or other other types of activities that only police officers can do. It might make sense to consider the events as a single category for purposes of that comparison. But I I definitely understand the logic from a financial perspective for breaking breaking those out that way.
Councilmember Miskata has a question and.
Oh, thank you.
So do I.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks as well to Greg. I recognize from Central Staff, you're reporting out on a report that SPD has sent us. And I appreciate that the rationale might not be one that we have formulated or perhaps even on council agree with, but I appreciate that you're in the tough position of reporting out on these issues. And Madam Chair, there's two questions that I have. And first was actually on the cost reimbursement for sporting events. Greg, I think you provided a little bit more clarity on what what we really mean when we say partial recovery or pretty good recovery for some events and not others. And I was trying, and and we actually had an earlier correspondence about this via email earlier this week because I was trying to remember in the pre-COVID years how much the reimbursement was for sporting events. And in those pre-COVID years, we didn't actually have a ton of events. You know, as many events, I should say, at the Seattle Center. And now we do, and I'm very thankful for their presence and not only for sporting events, but for concert venues. And it's an impressive building, but I'm really concerned about the lack of full reimbursement from all of the sporting events, but especially the lower percentage for Seattle Center. So just because you brought that up before I get to my second question, is that something that is in SMC, Seattle Municipal Code, that we on council have the ability to correct for? Or what is what would be the process for correcting for getting fuller reimbursement from Seattle Center events?
Hmm, uh, well, that's a good question. The SMC does control how costs are recovered for special events that receive a permit in the city. I think that some events at Seattle Center receive different kinds of permits. And so I don't know that they necessarily necessarily go through the same process. I think that some of the larger events, say, like the bumper shoots, they have more like contracts with the city for cost reimbursement. So some of them may be on a case-by-case basis where the city is negotiating with the promoter. For the big three, I'm thinking Bite of Seattle, Bumper Shoot, and there's one other in there. Is it Folk Life? I think for those particular ones, if the city wanted better cost recovery, I think they have to work directly with the promoter. And then in general, ev- events around the city, that would be under control of the SMC, which you would have the ability to raise the cost recovery rate on.
Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Chair, if I may just ask my second question, will I have the mic? Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you for that, Greg. I will follow up with you and others on the team for Central Staff. I think you've and and the chair have flagged a really important issue. We really cannot have cost recovery depending on which promoter is coordinating an event. And given the current use of the Seattle Center venue and our hopeful continued and expanded use of the center for more sporting events and community events in the wake of COVID, I'd very much like to figure out how we get those cost recoveries to near a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent. The second question I had is, could you elaborate a little bit more on the status of the council's request to look at the expanded duties of the PEOs as described in Slide zero-five-B-zero-zero-two? The slide stated that we are requesting SPD to provide a report that analyzes the cost of using PEOs and other non-SPD officers instead of sworn officers with a gun to do things like traffic control during special events and contracting sporting events. I know that this is stated repeatedly, but I want to make sure that we say again on the record, this council has been very much over the last two years looking at ways to move this work to others within our city who are qualified and skilled in helping to manage tra- traffic and ensure the safety at large events. That does not often require a gun and a badge or a sworn officer who is then being taken away from other duties. So we do appreciate that the work has been ongoing. But looking at this chart, these charts today, and the heightened need for us to scale down overtime, I am really interested in making sure that we're following through on getting these responsibilities either to the PEOs or others to make sure that these officers are not actually accruing overtime for this type of work, and especially not at events that are not reimbursing us fully for the cost of the large sporting or entertainment events.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I think that the executive had identified some potential labor issues with with the a large transfer of of those duties from Spog to Spog, the two unions that are involved. And I know that the executive is is working on those issues and and working to resolve some of those issues in a way that would allow more PEOs to work events in the way that you're describing, although I can't go into much more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And before I hand it over to Councilmember Lewis, I do want to note, there was a a few years ago an audit on cost recovery around special events. And my recollection is the lower cost recovery is not is less with the large events and more with the events that were that the Special Events Permitting Office is categorizing as free speech events. And their rather broad categorization of what constitutes a free speech event. But there were some recommendations coming out of that audit that we should take a a fresh look at.
And I think there's also nuance in, they did redo redo the the permitting fees. And so if it's a nonprofit, the permitting fees are different than a for-profit event that is not, you know.
Yeah, there is some intentional subsidizing.
Right.
Some events.
Yeah. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbald. Yeah, just to speak to that exchange briefly at the beginning of my remarks that that we just had. I know for some organizations, I mean, Folk Life is a great example, right? Where where cost recovery would be a burden on that festival since it is a free festival at the Seattle Center. So just being really intentional about how we have that discussion about cost recovery for certain activities, you know, is certainly something I want to do. I mean, clearly, there is a there's a big iceberg here of potential cost recovery. So I think it's more exceptions than than completely overdoing the entire rule. But I think there's some, you know, Folk Life comes immediately to mind, and there may be others. So as we look into that, agree with the comments of Councilmember Herbald and Councilmember Nelson of being intentional on the impact of that. So Greg, I I don't know that I I'm so much asking a question. I I'm just going to make a brief statement as we look at the slide. The combination of the the sporting events and the events including Seattle Center, wherein I think there's broad agreement, the bulk of those duties could probably be served by other employees in the city family, is a continued area of interest for me, as I know it it is for Councilmember Miskata, as she just just indicated, and others on the council. In the aggregate, it looks like those two bars go over twenty-thousand service hours. And separate from the discussion on cost recovery, which has mostly been our focus for the last couple of minutes, it's also important to note that those gray bars represent personnel. And as we've, you know, been discussing over the last several months, there there is a greatly diminished amount of personnel in the Seattle Police Department. It begs questions not only around urgency of retention and recruitment, but also around prioritization of the personnel who we currently have, on what duties they are and aren't doing. Twenty-thousand service hours, regardless of if it's being reimbursed or not, is is bogging down SPD personnel in jobs that I think in the in the in the mind of the public do not triage to to where we absolutely feel the exigent priority is right now for where those officers should be spending their time. So I do just want to, as Councilmember Miskata and Chair Herbald did earlier, just just join by putting that on the record So I do just want to, uh, as Councilmember Muscat and, um, Chair Herbald did earlier, just, just join by putting that on the record. That while we need to continue our efforts around retention and recruitment. We also need to have a really critical conversation about significant reprioritization of large, uh, areas of this overtime ledger. To focus on the things that we know the public is most concerned about, including violent crime, um, investigations of. Investigations of, of accusations of rape and, and other really critical, uh, urgent things. And I, I, you don't need to necessarily respond. This is mostly just to go on the record supporting those statements. But appreciate this graph kind of displaying, um, how the overtime is being allocated and the room that might be there for reallocation going forward.
Thank you. Um, before we move off of the topic of, um, overtime track, tracking. I think we've, um, this has been a good conversation about, um, how overtime is used in the department and how it's prioritized among different functions of the department. I do want to, um, lift up a, a slightly different issue. Overtime tracking systems is something that the press is, um, interested in. I know members of the public are interested in. Ensuring that, um, officers are receiving overtime in a way that is consistent with the policies and practices of the department. In 2016, the city auditor, um, had a series of recommendations about, um, the tracking of, um, overtime. For SPD and, um, key to these recommendations was the Work Scheduling and Timekeeping Project. That the council funded to update and modernize overtime tracking. Um, I did request that the city auditor take a look at its 2016 recommendations. Um, and report out on, uh, how the department has, um, has performed in addressing those recommendations. And, um, some of the recommendations were, uh, focused on what to do during the period of time. While they're still working to implement, um, the Work Scheduling and Timekeeping Software Solution. And, um, the auditor had recommended that SPD regularly conduct manual payroll auditing tasks. Such as queries, spot checks, and analyses of payroll data to identify usage, uh, issues with SPD's overtime usage. And, uh, SPD has reported that they are, um, not performing auditing of overtime and off-duty work. But they are doing, um, spot checks to ensure policies and procedures are being followed. And so, um, that's, uh, sort of partial, um, responsiveness to the city auditor's recommendations. But more troubling is that we've learned that the Work Scheduling and Timekeeping Software Solution. Will, um, there are, there are some, some issues with it. And, um, implement, they, they report that implementation issues beyond SPD's control. Led to the decision to not implement the Work Scheduling and Timekeeping Solution. Um, and that SPD will be exploring a different software solution. So, um, I think what that does from my perspective is, uh, while identifying this, um, this new technology solution. We still need to be making sure that the department is doing, uh, both spot checks. As well as, um, more systematic auditing of the, the assignment and usage of, of overtime. But, um, hopefully some more on that soon. Any other? Councilmember Nelson, yes.
So on this slide, speaking of events, um, it, it looks like rough combination of both events columns. Is about, I don't know, 15,000 or so. And that is far less than the, uh, the patrol column itself. So, um, to me, that is the significant issue because it gets back to your point, Greg, in earlier that, um, SPD has used about 24% of its overtime. And you would have expected less because it's the winter. So, um, what are we going to do about that? Because summer is coming and, uh, we can all imagine that overtime needs will be even greater for patrols. So, um, uh, is there any planning for, uh, the overtime budget as a whole? Adjustments to it and, um, in, in, this is for my education offline. I just need to understand better. How the, um, who makes the overtime budget? And do they, was it anticipated that so many officers would have continued to leave? I mean, I'm assuming that this is driven by the vacancies, but anyway. And I have a second question after that, about separations.
So Councilmember, what I can say is that SPD is certainly, um, aware of the situation. And, um, I talked with their finance director last week and she had some ideas about how they might. Attempt to control overtime on the backside of the year. I don't know if she would want me to lay those out now. So why don't I, um, why don't I get back to you on that? But to tell you that they are working on some things, um, and they are hopeful that they are going to be able to finish within the year. I am not as, uh, I'm not as hopeful as she is, but, um, uh, we'll, we'll see, we'll see how things work out.
Got it. Thank you. And then why were, um, separations? Let's see, in 2021, separations, the budget for separations was, uh, 1.4 million. And this year it's, uh, almost 90, uh, 900,000. So was there a deliberate reason why the separate, was the thinking that the trend would, uh, reverse? And there wouldn't be as many separations? And that's why it wasn't allocated as much this year as 2021?
So, uh, the original budget for separations in 2021, uh, reflected, um, historical spending in that area. And it was wholly inadequate. Uh, I don't recall the exact number, but it was very small. Because they weren't expecting the kind of, um, um, mass separations that they've seen. And then, uh, as we progressed throughout the year, uh, the council allowed SPD to use some of its salary savings. To, um, address its separation problem. And so they moved some of the salary savings into their separation budget and that started to grow their separation budget for 2021. So as you look backwards into 2021, you start to see a bigger separation budget, um, looking historically. This year, they figured there weren't going to be as many separations. And, uh, they hoped that it was going, the trend was going to start leveling out. Obviously, that is, uh, not entirely the case as, as we're seeing so far this year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And my recollection, I, I agree with Councilmember Nelson. If you look at those two gray bars on the events. They look like they would come up to be about 15,000. But my recollection is, um, that the total number of events overtime hours, um, for the purposes of this report. Was 23,000 hours. Am I remember, remembering correctly?
Uh, are you talking about last year?
No. For, for the first quarter. Overtime budget, the hours for events totaled to 23,000 hours. I, I recall that that's what I was told last week.
Um, I'd have to get back to you. I don't recall right off.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just noting that I, I agree with Councilmember Nelson. If you stack up those two gray bars, it looks like it's around 15,000. But I recall when I inquired last week, I was told that the number for events was 23,000 hours. But let's, let's, let's return to that. At, after the meeting. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, um, okay. So one other thing I would, I would mention to Council, on Councilmember Muscat's, uh, uh, point is that. If you all would like to see something different here, I, I have not sent this presentation by SPD. I'm sent raw data files. And so I am able, I, I take the raw data files and I interpret the data and I create this presentation. And so I, um, I could certainly put these two categories together. I originally broke out when I was at SPD, the various kinds of events. Because when I was at SPD, I wanted to track them separately. But in this role, I can put them together using the data files that they send. So just let me know.
Thank you.
All right. Response times and call triage. All right. So we have been talking for a few years about, um, what the department calls Priority Response Call Handling. And that is a system that they have discontinued. But I'm going to go ahead and, and just recap what that was for the public and for those who may not be familiar. When SPD resources were short, um, if something was occurring that was, uh, limiting their ability to respond to 911 calls. SPD would, uh, call over to the 911 center and would request to go into something to the effect of Priority Call Handling mode. And what that means is with certain exceptions, uh, Priority Three and Priority Four calls, callers. Would generally be told that SPD was, uh, suffering from a lack of resources. And that they should call back at another time. And, um, generally, the 911, uh, call taker would, would give them, uh, a time that might be good to call back. Like I said, there were some exceptions on the types of things that, uh, would still be allowed to go through and still be dispatched. Even if they were Priority Three or Priority Four, but in general, that's where it ended. And so there wasn't a lot of tracking of the, um, of the calls that were getting, uh, missed. Instead, what was being tracked was, as you can see on this table here, the days that were, um. That had some component of a Priority Call Status, uh, Alert. And so, uh, a Priority Call Status Alert might be, maybe it's only five or six hours. That, that a major event is going on for SPD and they can't take those lower, uh, priority calls. But the, uh, the 911 center would track those number of days. And you would know that, say in 2021, there were 223 days where they had to go on that alert. And they had to, um, uh, not answer some Priority Three and Priority Four calls. So that was the old system. The new system is, um, a bit different. Under the new system, uh, all calls that come into the 911 center are going to be dispatched by the 911 callers. And then what's going to happen is that if a call taker receives a lower priority call. Such as a noise complaint or an unleashed dog or a beach campfire, something to that effect. Then the caller will often be asked if they are simply responding, reporting, or if they would like to be contacted by an officer. Uh, SPD has indicated that, uh, those calls will accumulate in the queue. Until a supervisor can get to them. If a request for a callback was made by a caller, then the supervisor will attempt to do that. Otherwise, at that point in time, uh, the supervisor will look at the notes for the call. And make a, a decision as to whether or not that call is going to get a response. Or is going to be cleared with what they call a Z disposition action. And that is essentially just deleting the call. And so when that happens, it is of course tracked in the CAD. And in future briefings that I give to you, we will hopefully be able to display a table. That shows you the number of Z disposition calls, calls that were essentially not answered by SPD. Due to a lack of resources. And that is, uh, that is the future of, of SPD's, uh, call triage policy. Stop and ask if there's any questions before I move on.
Greg, for the Z disposition calls that are, um, um, not, that don't receive a response. What do the, are there criteria for how through the triage approach? Those, those calls are identified?
It is, the, it, the, the calls are, um. It, it, it's, the criteria are identified by the supervisors at SPD. So the SPD, uh, supervisors make the determination, looking at the notes. They make the subjective call using a particular criteria, um, a Z protocol criteria. As to whether or not, um, the call should be answered. And then, as I said, if there's a request for a callback, uh, my information right now is that they attempt to make that callback.
I, and I appreciate that, um, we did request that SPD participate so that we could, um, ask some of these questions. And, um, they were unable to join us today. But, um, I, I'm not hearing, um, that they're, you're, you're saying they're subjective de- decisions. But is there any guidance or any policy that defines, um, how those Z? Categorizations are made?
There is a protocol policy, but I don't know necessarily that it is the same kind of criteria that you're, you're asking about. That's a level of depth of question that I would leave for the department to answer. And I apologize, I, I don't want to speculate.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, we, we only learned about the switch from the Priority Response Camp, uh, Handling Approach. Rather late in, um, the development of this presentation. So appreciate that we're doing the best we can with limited information. Okay, let's move on. Councilmember Muscat has a question. Councilmember Muscat has a question. Thank you. Councilmember Muscat, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Not doing a very good job looking at the virtual participants. My, my apologies.
No, I completely understand. Uh, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thanks, Greg, for this summary. And Madam Chair, that's, thanks for the context here that you all just found out about this is. As recently as just putting together this presentation. So it sounds like previously a 911 dispatcher was in a really impossible and probably uncomfortable position. Of having to tell folks who are calling 911 for Priority Three and Priority Four calls. That basically we aren't taking these calls right now and please call back later. And I can imagine for a 911 dispatcher, that's an incredibly uncomfortable and hard conversation to have with someone who has made the decision to call 911. For whatever reason. Um, and, and, and I appreciate that this is trying to also not put those 911 dispatchers in that terrible position. I guess I have some questions though about, um, how, you know, how, how calls are. Who makes the final decision about calls, right? There's been a lot of coverage recently that there was seven new officers that are now being sent to encampments. Versus going to, uh, the work that they had previously done on, um, sexual assault investigations, for example. So where in the decision-making process does the person who's answering the phone? Or the, now the second person who's reviewing the calls, make the decision on who gets sent out to things like, um, investigating property crimes? Or investigating encampment disturbances versus, um, the issue that someone is calling about in the moment?
So I think if I, if I understand your call, your question, where, where in, in the process? It's, um, it, it's the case that if it is, uh, a Priority One or a Priority Two call. If it, if, if it's a, a high priority call. And I think that some of the things that you just mentioned, something actively going on in an encampment would fall into Priority One or Priority Two call. Then they go immediately. Um, it would not be a candidate for this Z disposition call. If it is the case that it is, uh, a candidate for this, um, particular Z disposition. Then it's by a supervisor, um, subjectively at a later time. When whatever crisis they're responding to, let's say it's a shots fired incident or, um, some sort of violent incident. Has resolved itself and the supervisor is able to return to the CAD system and look at the queue and look at the notes. And see, um, see, see which calls are, uh, are calls that he or she thinks should be. Should be attended to. I don't know if that's getting your, your answer out.
Yes, thank you so much.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Chair Herbald. Thank you, Mr. Doss, for this presentation. Had a question, uh, that's related to this slide. We are, I believe, still waiting to get the, uh, data from the executive. On which calls could be handled, uh, through. on which calls could be handled through alternative responses other than traditional responses. I believe SPD is compiling that information and presenting it to the mayor's office for analysis of which calls could be responded to through alternative means. Do we know the the timing of that? When we can expect that? Because I think that's the the bottleneck in terms of how we're supposed to then design the best alternative responses for community safety.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember.
We do have a briefing on the 28th to this committee about next steps around that analysis, but just wanted to get that date out there. Didn't mean to interrupt, Greg.
When is that date, Councilmember?
The 28th, our next committee meeting.
28th, okay.
But I just want to be I don't want to raise expectations. This report on the 28th is less about the the outcome of the analysis and more focused on the process and who's involved and the next steps. But Greg, maybe you could add a little bit more texture there.
Councilmember, I can't add anything. You are completely on top of it.
But central staff is actively working with the executive work group on this on this effort. Am I am I correct in saying so?
Yes, yes, we are. We're the idea is is exactly as you articulated. On the 28th, the executive will sit down and will lay out their plan for for both presenting this research demand analysis, RMD, study, the one that you talk about, Mr. Councilmember Peterson, and also how they would use that data with various stakeholders to to for the next step, to determine which calls might be answered by civilians. So it that meeting on the 28th is really going to be answering your question, both in terms of when the data will be available and how the data will be used going forward to get to the ultimate goal of alternative 911 response.
Things are starting to move, though.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Councilmember Nelson, yes.
Just responding to Councilmember Muscatia's point about responses to encampments that she characterizes disturbances. We do know that, I believe, the number that I remember is that 20% of homicides this year were associated with an encampment. And we also know that people living in encampments are much more likely to be victims of crime. And so they do have a responsibility, SPD does, to respond to these to these incidents. And so.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yeah. Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. I well, were you done with your remarks?
Yes.
I appreciate Councilmember Nelson raising the correlation that we're all aware of and that's been extensively reported on the massive concentration of particularly violent criminal activity that happens around encampments. A couple of important pieces of context, though, and maybe this is something the department can report back on or central staff can find. My understanding is that the staffing Councilmember Muscatia is referring to is police hours that are spent accompanying parks workers when they're in the process of a removal, rather than hours spent investigating criminal activity in an encampment. We have lots of models, to the point Councilmember Muscatia is making, of outreach methods that don't require police presence, at least not in the same way, or at least not in the function of police being used essentially as a as a conduit for the removal activity, but rather being more focused on the law enforcement component of their mission. Just Care in particular is a good example of that. There's never been a requirement or or an expectation that police be present at a Just Care removal. I mean, they wouldn't, they don't even use the term removal because they are able to plan for all residents of the encampment. So there's never anything to really protest or boycott when those operations are conducted, which doesn't necessitate the presence of police. So my understanding is what has been reported on and what's been covered in the news has been scrutiny over the exercise of having the police present when parks employees are conducting removals and would just indicate that we know that there are models that can minimize the need to do that, to the point Councilmember Muscatia has made, that we should continue to lean into, like Just Care, which we're going to have discussions about later this month on on some plans to maintain and potentially expand that model, which which, again, does not necessitate a significant apportionment of police resources to to effectuate, as we've seen countless times over the last two years. So I just wanted to clarify my understanding, and Councilmember Muscatia can correct me if she's wrong. But, you know, I think it's important that when we talk about the police interaction with encampments, that it it there's two different ways that that is occurring currently. And I think there is room to see if there's a more efficient way to use police time and resources in that respect.
Yeah, I just, in general, think it's important that we don't conflate responses to scenes of violence, shots fired, or investigations associated with those crimes to conflate those with planned police department staffing of encampment removals. Those are those are two different things.
And I was, yeah, I agree. Yeah, and the word I was responding to the word disturbance.
Thank you.
Not a planned one.
All right, moving on.
Right, so this is my last slide and not too much to say about this. It sort of speaks for itself. This is the response time data for priority one, two, and three in each precinct. What I can tell you is that the citywide numbers are for the average for quarter one, 10.37 for priority one and 51.93. And if you're looking at the median, it's 7.34 for priority one and 22.9 for priority two. And those are for those are the averages for the entire city. And again, the
Can you say that one more time?
Sure, if you're the averages for the entire city. So you can see here by precinct what the 2022 quarter one is for each precinct. But if you got the average for the entire city, it is 10.37 for priority one. And the median for the entire city is the median is 7.34.
And when we refer to the sort of national best practices standard of setting a seven minute response time for priority one calls, are we referring to the average or the median?
For many years, SPD had used a seven minute average as its time, as its as its goal. I I I would have to ask them now what their overall goal is. I I can't respond to that.
Thank you.
And then on the priority two, the average is 51.93 and the median is 22.9.
Looking to see if there's questions on this slide.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson, yes.
Thank you, Chair Herbold. I know many of us want to craft policies and budgets based on the data. And so, once again, I I believe we've got very disturbing data in front of our eyes here. The the number of police officers is dangerously down and the response times are dangerously up. I'm looking at the North Precinct, comparing 2019 to 2022, for example. This confirms a lot of what we've what I've heard from constituents who are concerned as well. I recently attended six different roll calls at the start of patrol shifts and heard directly from our public safety officers about their low morale and lack of trust. They're they're overworked, as we saw from the overtime data. King County Jail often refuses to book the suspects. SPD officers risk their lives to bring to justice and services. They feel the city leaders aren't doing enough to retain officers while other jurisdictions offer bonuses, allow officers to take home their patrol cars, and provide technology to keep them safe. Just nine months ago, I introduced legislation to help retain police officers, but that did not pass. Recruiting new officers to replace the hundreds of officers departing Seattle is vital. And yet, we should also acknowledge that recruitment takes a long time. And for those officers listening in, please stay in Seattle. We need you to stay to help us bring these response times down. Please know that we value the good work you do and the experience you have. I'm very hopeful Mayor Harrell's public safety plan, due within the next couple of weeks, includes immediate and robust retention actions to prevent Seattle from losing more officers and to get a handle on these response times. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also want to just flag that back in March of 2021, the department indicated that a loss of 50 patrol officers would increase priority one response times by three minutes. It does appear that that prediction is in line with the loss of police officers in the response. But just wondering, again, I'm not clear whether or not the response times that they were speaking of in March 21 were averages or medians? And whether or not, given that lack of clarity, if if that prediction has been has been realized here?
Yeah, and that's a that's a that's a good question, Councilmember. I know that when when Dr. Fisher moved in to his position, he changed the way that SPD looked at response times and brought in the median measure, which hadn't been used prior to his arrival. And so that's why I want to check back and see since his departure, I'm I I I'm not sure I'm not sure where their current goals lie. And I need to to check back with them to to get you an answer. And I apologize, I don't have that today.
That's that's all right. And I my recollection, and maybe this is also something that has changed, is that the priority one response time goals are not just the department's. They're it's a national best practice that the department follows. So again, I think having a better understanding of that is going to be really instructive for us in digesting what these increases mean. Other comments or questions? I'm looking for both for real hands as well as virtual hands, not seeing any. And Greg, was that your last slide?
Yep, that was it.
Okay, great. Well, look forward to learning more both about the new realtime triage system as well as the response time standard that we are seeking to meet for specifically for priority one responses. And really appreciate your work on this, Greg, as well as the continued reporting from from the department on these these questions that are questions that the council has asked for the department to do regular reporting on.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Councilmembers.
Perfect, thank you. The last item, we're going to do an abbreviated, sort of just quick touch on the changes to the bill since the last time we've talked about it, we are not planning on voting on the bill, not even planning on voting on the substitute, which is what we had originally aimed to do, is that we were going to get the substitute in front of us and at least vote on it. But given our time today, and hopefully Anne is hearing us now, hoping to do an abbreviated version of the briefing that we had planned. Alex, could you please read Agenda Item Four into the record?
Committee Agenda Item Number Four, Council Bill 120337, An Ordinance Relating to Civilian and Community Oversight of the Police, Establishing a Process for Investigating Complaints, Naming the Chief of Police, Adding a New Chapter Five to Chapter 3.29 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and Amending Section 49 of Ordinance 125315 to renumber the existing subchapter five of Chapter 3.29 in Sections 3.29-500 and 3.29-510 of the Seattle Municipal Code.
Thank you so much. So as noted at the last meeting, the bill is intended to address a technical issue from the 2017 Accountability Ordinance, which did not specify how complaints that name the chief police should be addressed. This is the second meeting for the development of this legislation. As mentioned, last time we met, I became aware of this issue early in 2022 and was notified by the Office of the Inspector General of some outstanding complaints against the former police chief. On the background, this particular version of this bill, the legislation was introduced to the referral calendar on June 7. So given the timeline for committees that meet on Tuesday morning for the introduction and referral calendar, we sent it in on May 25. Since then, we've continued to meet and consult with the Office of Police Accountability and the Office of the Inspector General, as well as consider the changes suggested by the Community Police Commission. The substitute version in the Central Staff Memo is the result of this continued conversation. And with that, I'll hand it over to Anne Gorman, Council Central Staff.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Herbold and Committee Members, Anne Gorman, Council Central Staff. In the interest of time, I I will refrain from going over Council Bill 120337 in depth. And I will just focus my presentation today on the changes that are reflected in the current draft substitute bill. And I want to emphasize, the the reason for the draft substitute bill is because all all stakeholders in this bill really recognize the importance of crafting airtight legislation that will be responsive in the event in the future that there is a complaint to OPA against the chief of police. And I think that everyone also has an interest in being transparent about about that interest in ongoing engagement. That is why we are discussing the draft substitute bill today. And the major change in it is a different rubric for the classification of complaints. Typically, OPA classifies complaints in one of four categories within 30 days of receiving them. And that is reflected in the introduced bill that Councilmember, the Chair Herbold, just described. As we've continued to work on the bill with OPA and OIG and with the input of the CPC, what we've realized is the complaints against the chief really do need to be treated differently. The substitute bill would therefore impose a new rubric in which complaints against the chief are evaluated for as long as it takes to determine whether or not they should be investigated. So in the draft substitute, there are only two categories, investigation or no investigation. And a few sets of changes flow from this change. For instance, OPA's typical process is aligned with the collective bargaining agreements that cover uniformed SPD officers. The chief is not covered by a CBA. So the draft substitute removes extraneous language related to CBAs and clarifies the chief's nonrepresented status. Substitute bill also spells out OIG's consultative role as OPA is evaluating a complaint. And it creates a new notification requirement beyond those in the introduced bill if OIG determines that this evaluation process is taking longer than it should. And the main effect of these changes is to ensure that complaints against the chief will be treated as separate and distinct from other complaints that OPA receives because of the gravity of the circumstance and that OPA investigators will not feel any time pressure to classify a complaint. The changes also clarify OIG's oversight role in these complaints, consistent with the Police Accountability Ordinance. And they make clearer something that was very important to stakeholders. And that is that there is no role for SPD in investigating complaints against the chief. All of you have a summary table describing the changes in the draft substitute bill as well as the draft itself. And as Chair Herbold mentioned, we we continue And as Chair Herbold mentioned, we continue to work on this. Thank you.
Anne? Any questions about the status of the bill of contents? None? All right, well, more coming up on, in our next committee meeting on June 28. Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments for the good of the order? All right, seeing none. The next Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 28, 2022. If there are any absences that are planned, would love to know them now. Not seeing any. And before we adjourn, there are no further comments from my colleagues. Nope, none. The time is 12:24 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you.